Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to the night's planning board meeting. January 9th, 2019. We've got a big crowd tonight, and we're going to have some of you probably speak. We welcome that, but we've asked that when you come up to the podium here that you state your name and address where you live. And we ask that try to keep your comments around three minutes so we can get everybody in, et cetera. We'd ask for not to be too emotional on it, and be civil, and treat everybody with respect, if we can. So as we look through the board up here, we do have a quorum, so we can conduct tonight's meeting. And the first item is to approve the additions or deletions to the agenda. I've been asked to move items number nine and 10 to six and seven. Then we'll take it down from there, and then I think, Lee, you've got some recommendations that you want to talk about?
Yes, sir. On item number eight, which is the Poppin Road rezoning, we had a slight issue with our, we think with our agenda software system, where when those agendas were published, it did not bring over the site plans that were associated with that rezoning. It brought over, actually brought over Twin Lakes, so you got Twin Lakes twice. So you guys didn't get a chance to really review that in your agenda packet. I've notified the applicant that that was an issue, so we've talked about it. If you guys feel comfortable moving forward, I think they're fine with that. If you don't feel comfortable moving forward and you want to delay it until next month, they're okay with that as well.
Okay. What I'd like to do is ask for two different approvals here, if it's okay. Is it okay with everybody to move number nine and 10 to six and seven? Do we have a motion for that?
So moved.
So moved, thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you, Patrick. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion passes. Okay, now back to what Lee talked about. What's the will of the board here? Do we want to try to scramble through the papers to see what's going on, or do we want to postpone this till next month? We've had time to study it and make sure that we understand the full process of which we have to go through. What's the will of the board? Do we have a motion?
I think that since we didn't get the whole packet, I think we should postpone it till next month.
Are you making that in form of a motion?
Making a motion.
Okay, the motion by Patrick is to postpone that to next month.
Second.
Second? Charles, did you make that second?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and this will be postponed to the applicant. We apologize for this. Thanks for your understanding. And with that... Do we have a vote? Make sure we have a vote. Oh, excuse me, vote. Everybody in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
We do thank the applicant for taking their time and hope we didn't inconvenience a lot of people too much. With that, then we've got the, we'd ask for the approval of the agenda as amended. Do we have an approval?
So moved.
Or a motion to approve it. Okay. Patrick has made a motion to approve it as amended. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay. We also have before you, and I hope you've had time to look at the minutes for December the 4th. Ask you to take a look at those. And if someone's got a motion to approve, or disapprove, or make any changes, please do so.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion's been made by Christopher to approve the minutes that's been submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
Patrick, thank you. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as been presented, please raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries. Okay, first item then that we moved up to number six is number nine on the text amendments.
I would like to take this opportunity, since I don't get in front of you very much, to reintroduce myself. My name is Jim King. I'm a planner with Union County. I manage the zoning court process, and I'm also the staff liaison to the Board of Adjustment. I promise I will not take much of your time up. These amendments that we, that are proposed, or what I refer to as house cleaning or housekeeping. The First Amendment deals with the Board of Adjustment, and these proposed amendments were suggested by Phil Sturgis, the attorney to the Board of Adjustment. First one is, under the Board of Adjustment hearing and final decision, it currently speaks that requires a four-fifths majority vote, whereas a number of years back, Union County was able to get enabling legislation to get simple majority. So in order to stay in conformity with state law, that is the proposed amendments to go to, to reflect it in the ordinance as a simple majority. The other things in here with the Board of Adjustment as well are to bring it in conformity with North Carolina general statute, such as in the next item on the list here, under 85-030 quasi-judicial rule. We had it in ordinance that a interested party could object to, or deem something being incompetent, irrelevant, or immaterial, when the general statutes clearly call for it, a person or party with standing. So that is that change. And then also, in evidence and testimony, it again spoke to an interested party when it indeed needed to talk about a person or party that has standing, that has the ability to cross-examine or to inspect a document. However, a person of interest, and to give clarity to that, they have the right to give testimony or evidence, but that's all they can do. They cannot cross-examine, they cannot deem evidence or testimony as being incompetent. With that, I'm not sure if you guys want me to go to the next amendment, or if you want to vote on these separate. I can do it either way, but that would be the first text amendment that's before you. Staffs here to answer any questions we may have.
Chairman, make a motion to approve text amendment to section 80.120-G. The Board of Adjustment hearing and final decision.
Okay, the motion's been made by Doug to approve 80.120G. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Charlie, appreciate that. All those in favor of approving 80.120-G as presented, please raise your right hand. Okay, thank you. Okay, next.
Mr. Duggan?
Chairman, we were discussing another issue. Who made the motion in a second on that motion, Chris?
I was just... Thank you, sir.
Chris, would you want to amend your motion, because you only covered the first section, to amend it to cover 85.030E and 85.030F?
Yeah, I'd like to amend the motion to the two sections.
Those two?
85.030E and 85.020F.
Okay, motion's been made. Do we have a second to amend?
Second.
Charlie, thank you. With the amendment being made, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Lock sign, okay, passed. Okay, next.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
The next amendment that we have before you here is staff-initiated. It's to section 35.040. It's dealing with rural home occupations. Just to give you a little background, we have two types of home occupations in the development ordinance. One of them's called a suburban home occupation, one's called a rural home occupation. Suburban home occupation is really geared to that of the residential neighborhood setting, whereas the rural is more out in the countryside, larger acreage. The suburban is more restrictive, where the rural gives you a little bit more flexibility, such as, in the suburban home occupation, you're prohibited from doing any automotive repair. However, in the rural setting, in the rural home occupation, it does not have that prohibition. So therefore, if you make the other standards in that section, you could possibly have an automotive repair shop at your home. So in order to keep with the intent of the ordinance, and to keep it out of those residential settings, staff is suggesting that we limit it only to the RA 200 and the RA 40 zoning districts, and that we increase the minimum lot size from 100,000 square foot, which is just a little over two acres, to a minimum of five acres. Again, if the board has any questions at this time, staff will be happy to answer them.
Any other comments on that?
Now, does this pertain to a specific occupation board will use, and that is an example?
We were just using that as an example, because there's many more home occupations that are allowed under the rural home occupation that we just haven't dug into. The real key there is, it's because it's less restrictive to keep it out of the suburban or the neighborhood setting, and we feel that in keeping with the intent of the ordinance, this keeps it more, you know, to the intent of the ordinance, is by increasing that minimum lot size and restricting the zoning districts.
And RA 200 is what?
RA 200 is a residential agricultural zoning district. Up until recently, it was what we called a floating district, meaning that there was none of them, it did not exist in the county. It was only identified in the ordinance. And you have a minimum lot size of 200,000 square foot, which is just shy of five acres. They would still have to have the five acres in RA 200. 200 square foot comes out of what, 4.5 acres?
4.6.
4.6.
4.6 acres.
Any other questions? Okay, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve text amendment to section 35.040, rural home occupation as a section.
Okay, thank you for that motion, Chris. Do we have a second?
Second.
Patrick, thank you for the second. All those in favor of amending 35.040, please raise your hand. Okay. Did you get that? All right, good deal. Any other questions for anything about text amendments? If not, thank you for your time. Appreciate it much. Come back to see us more.
I will.
Okay. Appreciate you getting the copies, too.
Let me just, before we move on on this one item, because Russell was not here when we started the meeting, technically Russell is a regular voting member. There wasn't an issue previously, because you had seven members and all the alternates could vote. Now that Russell is here, we have a situation where we have to designate which alternate will actually, their vote will become officially part of the record. So if the board could establish who the voting member is of the alternates, simply because you now have eight members here and it's only a seven-member, regular voting member board. Unfortunately, when Russell came in late, that sort of made us have to go back and change that.
Okay.
That's all we need to do, is make sure that we're clear on that.
Christopher, you were a regular voting member last meeting, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that, do you mind if we switch it over? Robert? Okay. Do we have a motion for that?
Make a motion.
Change?
Patrick made a motion.
Make a motion then that Robert will be the voting member tonight. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Do we need a second? Do we need a second, rather?
Charles, a second.
Right. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Very good. Thank you. Sorry about that. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you for catching that. All right, okay, the next item on the agenda is CZ 2018-003, the Weddington Road Wedding Venue.
Mr. Chairman, Board, thank you. As you stated, this is a rezoning request. It's 2018-003. This project is located along Weddington Road, and it is for a wedding venue. These are some pictures of the property. This first picture on the top left is actually the house that's on the property now. You may be familiar with it. It's, I think the house was built in 1910, I believe, so it's a fairly old home. Across the street is the radio station, so probably familiar with where that is. This is looking west along Highway 84, and this is looking east back toward Monroe. And this is, this is right outside the city of Monroe. Actually, it's outside the city on both sides, because to, just off this map, to the east of the city limits of Monroe, and there was a satellite annexation for this property done several years ago. Rocky River Elementary School, I believe, is on this track, and this was supposed to be, I think, a shopping center, and there's a gas station. This is Highway 84 and Rocky River Road. So it sits just to the east of that. As you can see, most of the property around there, there's a few subdivisions in the area. One, there's one across the street, that's Serenity Hills. Seven Oaks is a little bit further, and Seven Oaks and Willoughby Woods is a little bit further to the east. But most everything besides those two subdivisions, and this general area is fairly rural, fairly Zoning in the area primarily consists of R-20, so half-acre minimum lot sizes. There is some R-40 and some commercial in the area. This is a conditional district that was approved by the city of Monroe. Again, it was for a shopping center, and there's some R-40 to the north of that, and there's some general business designations down toward the intersection of Rocky River Road. But for the most part, it's RA 20, an R-20. No real environmental features on the property itself. That's the one that's highlighted there in black. You see, there's a stream up to the north, but on that property, nothing, nothing really major exists. Transportation impacts, these are both Rocky River and 84 designated as future four-lane roads with curb and gutter. And close to the intersection along Weddington Road, you have a traffic count of around 10,000 vehicle trips per day, and on Rocky River, you have a traffic count of about 8,800. Land use plan calls for this to be mixed residential, and you kind of have a neighborhood center designation at the intersection there. So higher-density residential patterns are expected in this area, and some commercial land uses are expected. And site plan that was submitted, not a whole lot's changing. There is a parking area being proposed. We do have a couple of comments that will go back, but nothing major where we couldn't take this to the board. We would ask that this fence be removed from the parking lot. I believe that is the intention. But there's a parking area. The house will remain on-site. That will be used as part of the wedding venue. And then there's a 5,000-square-foot building proposed in the rear that will be used for the actual events to take place, the weddings. This is a circular driveway now, so there's an access point here, there's another access point here. We have asked the applicant to remove one of those access points, because this will be more of a commercial use of this property, and be more trips in and out. So we asked them to remove one of those access points. Wasn't enough traffic to require a TIA or anything like that, but staff's looked at this, and we think it's fine. The, they did have, the applicant did have a community meeting. I believe one, one person showed up to the community meeting. They didn't really have any issues with it, they just kind of wanted to know what was going on, and they wanted to make sure that the trees on this property weren't going to be cut down. I believe that the applicant explained that they didn't own that property, so they wouldn't cut those trees down, but they wouldn't control it. That's my presentation. If you guys have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer, and the applicant is here, so they will probably want to give a brief presentation. Yes, sir?
I've got a question for you, Lee. You said the building was the, up here at the top, but yet in the facility components, it says install a permanent tent slash structure approximately 30 by 60 on a concrete pad.
Right.
Which is it?
So those, by building code, those are both considered to be buildings.
Okay.
A permanent tent has to be inspected, just like a permanent structure.
Okay.
So from our standpoint, either one's fine. This property's screened well enough where it, you won't be able to see this from adjacent properties.
So if they decided to make a permanent building with four walls?
That'd be perfectly fine, yeah. This is a conceptual level plan that we've got, so if they choose to do a permanent building or a permanent tent, either one of those would be fine. They would have to get approved through building code, and both of those, I don't want to misspeak, I don't want to say they have exactly the same building code requirements, but they are very similar.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Lee?
Lee, you sent out the notices, obviously, to adjacent property owners, or the applicant did?
I believe we expanded it a tad, but yeah, it was pretty much to the adjacents.
It's kind of a funky cutout of that site where the neighboring property owner to the north, east, and west of it.
Right here?
This one here. It's a trust. You sent a notice, didn't hear anything back from them about?
No, we, I don't remember exactly who the notices went to, but we usually expand it a little bit further when there's adjacent residences here. So I think we hit some of these. I know that one of the ladies that lives in Seven Oaks showed up to the community meeting, and we send out this, our rezoning notices go to the same people that the community meeting notices go to. So we had one lady show up from the Seven Oaks Drive, and we hit the people across the street in the Serenity Hills neighborhood. But no, we didn't get any, we got no phone calls or anything about this, about this rezoning.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Lee? Okay, thanks, Lee. Would the applicant like to say anything about the project?
Well, there's not a lot to say. Our intention is to do this. Plans are not very well-defined, but it will be compliant with rules, regulations, ordinances, whatever we put there, we'll have to comply with what is being approved, so.
Would you mind stating your name, please?
Emil Popa.
Okay.
My address is 2020 Forest Drive in Mathews.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Pardon?
Uh, no. Thanks.
I'd like to ask what the wishes of the board?
Do you want to see if there's anyone in the public?
Oh, yes, excuse me. Is there anyone in the board that wants to speak for or against it? Yes, sir.
My name is John McCain. I appreciate the opportunity to meet you gentlemen tonight. Couple things. I live in the Willoughby Woods Development, and it's a gated community. That's Willoughby Farms that's also in there. I got a letter about the meeting tonight. We have other individuals in my community here tonight that will tell you that they never got any notices. I got one, and I shared mine with them, that's why they're here tonight. I have seen no others as far as notifications concerning meetings and things of that nature. And I probably live as close to this proposal site as anybody that's in the room. The consensus that I gather in coming here tonight with my neighbors is that we're not really interested in having it. And the number one reason being cited is that, yeah, I haven't really done a traffic study, but 8,000 cars was thrown out there for a couple of things. We have three schools in a three-mile radius, and believe me, nobody's more for schools and education.
Sir, I think you're actually talking about the senior living facility. This is a wedding venue? Are you, are you commenting on the wedding venue? I just want to make sure...
Wedding, wedding venue.
You are commenting on the wedding venue, okay? I just want to make sure...
You already saw the pictures, and it's a pretty good perspective. I don't have that, but yes.
Okay, I wanted to make sure you were commenting on the wedding venue.
Absolutely. I mean, that's what, that's the business being discussed.
No problem.
Sure. So, and I'll be brief, because three minutes is three minutes. With the three schools that we have in the area, there's an overpass down near the Walter Bickett School, for where there's a problem with the trains on 84 proper. You know, there's a development there with a site commercial just above Union Academy, but if you go down 84, if you go down Martin Luther King, if you go down Rocky River Road, you're going to hit a railroad crossing. Gentlemen, traffic is horrendous. It doesn't matter if it's 2,000 cars, if they're coming in a condensed timeframe, you're not going to get any place during that time. And this traffic coincides with peak driving time, from 6:30 in the morning to 9:30 in the afternoon, we could hardly get out of our development. If you go out and go to the right, as this gentleman indicated, towards Weddington, and you turn at Rocky River Road, it takes 30 minutes to get from Rocky River Road to Highway 74. And I don't even need to mention the fact that we've had a second traffic guard struck at Rocky River Elementary. There's been two there in that traffic. You go down to Martin Luther King, the traffic is not much better. I don't want us to get ourselves in a situation where we're being totally reactive to what is going on with the traffic situation in our area. We got ballgames on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, along with all the other activities that the kids are involved with. And that's a wonderful thing. You don't even feel bad about it, hearing the drums and the bands and things, you just don't, because I grew up in this town and in this county, and I was an athlete. So I got a real good perspective on that. My kids were athletes, standouts, first-team All-Americans at state. So I support the schools, and I support their activities. But we are really in a bad situation with traffic, what we're talking about. And I don't know what it's going to take to get us to where we can get in and out safely the way that we want and need to, but I've been there for 25 years, and it's done nothing but gotten a bit worse from just what happens with 485, trying to get there to Weddington and all that exercise. And you know you're having a bad day when you hear on a major radio station in Charlotte, in Charlotte, that traffic needs to be avoided on Newtown Road because a deer has been hit. And they got Brookshire Freeway, Independence Boulevard, but you know what's a concern? The deer that got hit on Newtown. These rural roads, they're taking a beating during peak drive time. And thank you for your time.
Okay. Clarification, Lee?
Yes, sir.
On the wedding venue description here, it says, "Operation days are Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, typically from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m." How did that affect y'all's recommendation on this?
I mean, that played into it. So this is a facility that, a wedding venue is generally going to operate on weekends.
Right.
So the things that were submitted as part of this application would be, would be part of, would be part of the application. So that, that was something that did kind of weigh heavily on our, on our recommendation, but even if it was a wedding venue that operated every day of the week, you're, you're talking about one, about one, maybe two weddings. So it's not, this is our bill, and I, I don't know if I'm speaking out of term, but I don't know that that would have the same impact as a subdivision or anything like that.
Yes, this, I mean, this site plan that's up on the screen, it has 50 parking spaces that was stipulated, so presumably you're talking, because I think that was limited to 200 attendees.
200 people.
So that would be pretty, pretty optimistic. 50 park, 50 cars, they're all going to come in at roughly the same time, within an hour, and they're all going to leave at the end of the night. So therefore, it did not trip our trip generation requirements for a traffic impact study, which would be 100 per hour. And because this is typically happening in an off-peak type of situation, a weekend or the evenings, the impact was a lot less than it would be otherwise, certainly if it were... a lot less than it would be otherwise. Certainly, if it were something that was school time, yeah, that's going to be a school, an educational type of facility, then you're going to have a very consistent peak. But this is off-peak, so to speak. So it's, it's not, it's not as much of an impact on the network.
So you're, you're comfortable, from your standpoint, on parking when it says the wedding party is of no more than two hundred guests?
They have, they have the parking spaces that are provided. If it's, if they aren't, they aren't meeting it, people parking elsewhere, well, then they're in violation of the conditions of this.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments for or against?
Bjorn, is eighty-four already widened in that picture?
No, it's not.
Not yet?
It won't be widened for a long time.
So when it does get widened, how many parking spots will they lose then?
They won't lose any because it's, it's backed with enough of a setback that it's, it's not within the widening footprint. But even then, if they lose a couple, we'll just, you know, they'll be compensated and we'll just redo the site plan and do something else. But that's, again, it's not on any plan for widening.
I was thinking the same thing. If they, if they lost them, they move them to the back. But then you have your septic system back there, so you're going to have leaching fields, so they can't get too close to that.
It's, it's not going to be widened in my professional lifetime.
And your, your septic field, actually, you would think that it would be right there at the, at the, for the parking areas. The leach field is actually on the opposite side from where the septic system is.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. You state your name and your address, please?
Okay. My name is Lidera McCain, and I live at two hundred Willoughby Woods Drive. And my question and concern is, will this venue be used for something other than weddings? Because we are concerned about the noise issue as well.
Concerned about what? Pardon me?
The noise issue as well. Will it be used for things other than just a wedding venue? And as my husband did say, we, we did not get a notice. We went around and talked to our neighbors. And will this rezoning affect our zoning in the neighborhood? Is it just going to be just that area that's rezoned, or is it going to affect the whole neighborhood?
Lee?
It will just, it's just that property that's, that's being rezoned. So it won't, it won't impact any other, any other adjacent or nearby properties. As far as the noise, that is actually, one of the reasons, I think, why they went with a permanent building. If this were an open-air facility, we do have some fairly strict rules about sound levels and things like that. So all, any, any amplified sound, so if there's any speakers or music or anything, has to be inside that building. It can't be, it can't be outside.
But you're talking about a tent.
It, it, yes, ma'am.
There's a big difference between noise in a building and noise in a tent.
Sure, sure. I, that's just, the order that says if it's, it has to be inside a building. So as far as whether it could be used for any other things besides weddings, the application was for a wedding venue. So it should be only used for weddings. And certainly, if the board wanted to, you know, further enhance that and make that a condition, that'd be something you guys could do as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, I'm a little confused. You're calling a tent a common structure?
The, the, the building code, if it's a, a temporary tent is something completely different than a, than a permanent tent from the aspects of the North Carolina Building Code. If you set up a tent permanently on a site, it has to meet building code. And there are tents that, that can meet building code. They're not cheap, but you can do it. So a tent from the purposes of building code is considered a building, if it's a permanent tent. A temporary tent that you had set up for an afternoon is not, that, that doesn't meet, that doesn't meet building code. That doesn't meet, but a permanent tent, they meet almost the exact same requirements of a building.
And then don't, don't misunderstand that when he said building code, you know, walls have to be made out of the same materials. That's not what he's talking about. He's talking about the structure itself, you know, any footings that are required for the tent poles, you know, how they condition the space. If they condition the space, it has to meet the requirements. Any electrical that goes in there has to meet all the electrical requirements. And then the fire marshal has a section of the code that they also have to review and approve for a permanent tent. So it's a structure. If it's permanent in nature, it has to meet certain codes. Whereas a temporary tent doesn't have to meet those same codes. The applicant is proposing one or the other. I'm going to do some permanent structure. Is it going to be a permanent tent? Okay, there's codes they have to meet for that. Is it going to be a permanent building with four walls and all that? There are codes for that. And as Lee pointed out, we have some pretty stringent noise requirements. And so if he intends on using a tent, it may be more challenging to meet those noise requirements with a tent versus a building. That's up to the applicant. If the applicant thinks that he can meet those noise requirements, fine. But if we get complaints and we, we determine that he's exceeding those noise levels, he's going to get a notice violation for it.
And, and if, if the board has, has some concerns with, with the type of building, those are things that you guys can talk to the applicant about. So if you, if you want, if you, if you don't want this to be a permanent tent, you could ask the applicant, would you be willing to build a permanent...
Permanent building.
Stick-built building. And if the applicant agrees to that, then, then that could be a condition that you put on that rezoning.
You keep throwing the word "tent" around. Are we talking like, like a circus-type tent?
It'd be similar, it'd be similar to that, yes, sir.
Yeah, big heavy canvas, like the windows and stuff.
It could very well be that way, yes, sir. Absolutely. So you have a lot of options when it comes to negotiating, you know, issues. You know, as one of the property owners brought up, you know, is this a wedding venue only, or will other events occur? Well, if the board's more comfortable with saying, this is a wedding venue only, and that's all we're willing to consider, you can certainly propose that to the applicant. If you want this to be a more permanent structure, a building, stick-built building, you can propose that to the applicant. Understand, this is an advisory board, so the applicant's going to take that information and go to the commissioners, and the commissioners can agree and say, we believe those conditions are the ones that you should apply. And the applicant can agree or disagree. Or, you know, the commissioners may say, we don't think those conditions are necessary. But as a revisory board, you certainly have the ability to ask and request that the information be more stringent, other than what the application is entitled.
What would you like to say?
Well, let me just clarify, because this tent, this building, it's, it'd be a structure that's compliant with whatever the rules of noise ordinances. And, no, I don't want to do something illegal or something that would impede from us from running the business. So obviously, it has to comply with noise ordinances and lights and traffic and all that.
Let me ask you a question based on that.
Yeah.
It's July. Temperatures high nineties, may get to a hundred, don't know.
Yeah.
How you going to cool that?
Well, it may be that to comply with these, you need an air conditioning unit.
Pardon?
You need an air conditioning unit. It may be. I don't know. I mean, at the point right now, I don't want to spend a lot of time investigating what I'm going to do unless I know I'm going to be allowed to do it. And of course, once I'm allowed to do it, I'll have to present to the building, call enforcement, or to whoever has to approve what my plans are, to say, okay, this is fine. You're going to, you have a structure that has walls that will not, not promulgate noise more than two hundred feet away, that will not promote it lights in the neighborhood, that will not impede traffic. All these, in my judgment, are subsequent to me being approved to do it. Because some people suggested, well, you hire an engineer to do plans, you hire an architect to do plans. Well, of course, I'm going to do that, but I'm not going to spend the money and the time prior to knowing that I can do this. So that's my approach.
Any questions for that, concerns?
I have a question for you, sir. Will you entertain the prospect of using this other than just for weddings?
No.
Okay.
It's too complicated. Even so, it's too complicated, but it's my wife.
I will say, there's a tent on Secret Shortcut that's been used for this for years, and it's beautiful, still there, still in, it's air-conditioned, heated, use it year-round. It's a beautiful setup, right at Secret Shortcut and Union Village and Trail Road.
It may be, but it will be a tent. I don't know yet. But again, these are decisions that I'm going to make once I know I can do it.
I think that we should qualify this as a wedding venue only.
I agree.
So it doesn't turn into an event.
Event center.
Venue. Because when you go into that, then he's precluded by law from preventing certain groups to go in that he'd prefer not to go in. And if we can exclude anything except a wedding venue, I think it'd be much better for neighbors. And I do, I am concerned about the noise. You're over three hundred feet away from the road, but less than eighty feet away from the property line. And I realize you want to be away from the road because of the noise and the traffic and that sort of thing. And I know you've got an insulated buffer around there at this point in time, but then you're only eighty feet from the property.
That's true, but around the property line, now the twenty-four acres of woods, so that's at least what's now there.
Ma'am?
So I don't know what's, the future's going to hold, so. And I, we did mail notification to the trust that owns the property around it.
If this is approved, I'd be making a recommendation, only be a wedding.
Stipulation, yeah. Okay. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Your name, address?
My name's Robert Binstone. I live on Wildwood Road, four-ten Wildwood Road, which is in Willoughby Woods subdivision, which is immediately behind that plot that you have there. I don't frequent the woods there, so I'm not sure how many feet it is. But I do know that a number of my neighbors' property backs right up to the back line of this property, which is getting me pretty close to that building. And I, I was also concerned about whether, after he gets permission to have weddings there, if he might have concerts there. And a lot of weddings have outdoor music. And frankly, I haven't heard about this until a few hours ago. One of my neighbors came by in his truck and handed me a document that he had printed out online. I hadn't heard, I talk to my neighbors all the time. I haven't heard anybody mention that there was a rezoning happening. Haven't had an opportunity to look at that plot, or we haven't had an opportunity to have a community meeting to consider whether this would affect us, or, you know, what, what the communities, what the neighborhood's attitude about it would be. And I just want to make you aware of that. And it seems to me, we should have time to at least learn about it before this is voted on.
Lee, did you say there was a community meeting?
Yes, sir. There, there was a community meeting. I can't...
Well, no.
What we're required to do is, at least for this meeting, not, not the community meeting. We notify all the adjacent property owners. So the Willoughby Woods subdivision doesn't directly abut this property. There's a large property that's in between those two. But for, for the community meeting, we did, I, I can't tell you who got the notices because I don't have, I don't have that in front of me. But I can tell you, we generally expand that notification for the community meeting a little bit. We did have, like I said, one lady from the Seven Oaks community, which I understand, that's, that's not, that's not Willoughby Woods. That's a little bit further down the road. We did have one lady from the Seven Oaks community show up. There, there was also a, a man and a woman there. When, when I first got there, that, you know, we spoke a little bit, and I think Mr. Papa spoke to him, and they actually, they actually left because they, they thought it was a, like a subdivision or something. So they, they decided they didn't, it didn't matter. But those are the only people that, that showed up.
Thank you, Lee.
May I mention that you mentioned a number of subdivisions in your presentation earlier. And I believe we were closer than any of those that you mentioned. But, but you didn't mention us, so that makes me wonder if you did notify people in Willoughby Woods.
No, I, I actually mentioned Willoughby Woods during the presentation. I mentioned Willoughby Woods and Seven Oaks and Serenity Hills. They're all right there, kind of together.
Any questions for the gentleman? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments and concerns. Anybody else here want to make any comments in the audience?
Dee.
Okay.
John McCain from Willoughby Woods again. I got the letter the twenty-first of December. I spoke with a number of my neighbors today, and not a one of them received the letter. I took copies of the letter around, and there's probably ten or twelve folks that are aware of the meeting, but they're not here because it was called a quick notice for them. But not a one of them said that they got a letter. And I don't want to debate the point, but if they had gotten a letter, they would have no reason to tell me that they didn't. And there's Willoughby Farms. They're not to be forgotten. They're million-dollar homes down in that gated community. We all use the same access in and out. They would do backflips if we're talking about putting the tent up. They upgraded the entrance way in monumental ways to our development. And they're extremely proud of the fact that we're all neighbors and we lived there. I don't think they would like a tent. And I think I have a good idea of what it looks like. I know where the crow's nest is. Where seventy-five and eighty-four come together, there's one there, and there's been one there. But I just don't think that the voice of the folks that aren't here, once more, I'd just like to reiterate the fact that none of the neighbors that I talked with, sirs, they're not in favor of it.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, sir.
My name is Dennis Clapper. I live at Willoughby Woods, Holly Tree Lane. And I hadn't heard about this thing until this afternoon. So I, you know, would like to learn a lot more. But I hadn't heard about it until my neighbor told me about it. That's all I got to say.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments from any of the members of the board here? Thoughts?
I'll say one thing.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. My name's Mackenzie Moser. I do brokerage and development with the Moser Group. And I actually am just learning about this tonight as well. But I've been approached by the adjacent owner to sell their property for a residential development. So as this property is being developed, I think it's a great use. I would just look at the surrounding property and consider the development for residential around it. So that's all I had to say. They're not here tonight, but they'll like to know about this property being developed as well.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is that the trustee property?
What'd you say?
Is that the trustee property?
Correct. And it's twenty acres.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I understand that, but if we're going to consider what I want to do, or what's going to happen in twenty years from now, next to that place, not the best approach, I would think.
What are the wishes of the board?
I'd make a motion that we pass CZ twenty eighteen zero zero three with a permanent building, a structural building, either a metal building or a wood building, something other than a tent, a permanent structure of some sort.
May I make a clarification? Mr. Madeline indicated his, his desire for a wedding venue only.
Right.
Would you be willing to include, I'm only stating that because he mentioned it earlier.
Yes, to be a wedding venue only.
Judge Brown?
A fixed building to be a wedding venue only.
You know, if it's a fixed building, I don't mind class reunions, Sunday, I mean, church events or whatever. If it's a permanent structure... If it's a permanent structure, a tent structure bothers me. I don't mind having it.
So. Again, that's a board, that's a board decision on what your, what your recommendation is.
I think Russell here has to.
He'd have to amend his motion. He'd have to amend his motion.
Have him roll out his motion first.
Yeah.
And then you make that.
I'm gonna stick with my motion.
What's, what's the, what's the wishes of others if it's a permanent structure? He'd be allowed to have whatever events he wants to, because of the light and noise pollution will be a minimum. And it would still be a minimum of that amount of people, two-hundred, two-hundred-twenty-five. But if it's a permanent structure, would you be allowing to use it to its full benefit, or would we just put the wedding venue on there if it's gonna be a, a permanent structure?
One thing to keep in mind, though, is, is if it is a permanent structure, and you, you can open it up to other events, then you can now potentially increase the hours of operation.
Right, right.
Ever, I, I'd like to point out, the application that was filed actually says the intended use is for wedding parties of no more than two-hundred guests. That's part of the application. The application, the conceptual plan, all that, that's part of any, any, if it's approved, that's part of any approval, so.
I would stipulate that we.
Yeah, so if you wanted to expand it, if you wanted to expand it, you'd be going beyond what the application that was filed. You'd be going beyond that.
Because it says also, it's only Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Correct.
Operations.
Yes.
If, if you go with permanent structure, then I'm willing to say it'd be a wedding venue only. Okay, if you'd like to make a motion about that.
That is my motion.
I would add a friendly amendment to that permanent structure with all of the conditions that are set forth in the application. So the timing.
Timing, exactly.
Of the operation.
Okay.
Do you have a second?
We have a second, I'll make it. Okay, motion's been made. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thanks, Patrick. Okay, then motion's been made, it's been seconded. Ask for vote then, if there's no other questions from the board here. All those in favor of the motion made by Russell, please raise your right hand. Okay. Denise, raise your right hand. Okay. Good to go.
Just like to put out to the, the audience, some of the who spoke in opposition, you still have another chance to speak and, and address this with the county commissioners when the matter comes up before the court. How will we be aware of that?
I'm, I'm actually, if you guys will put your names and addresses on here, we'll make sure you get notified.
If you have a couple of us, we'll take it and bring that name back for you, sir.
I'm, I'm sorry.
And within your length page, we'll bring it back to you, the name.
Okay.
And Brian, you might want to tell them the approximate time, when it will come before the county commissioners.
Absolutely. So generally, the county commissioners will have this at their meeting in February. Their meeting in February, and again, that's, you, the notice will go out and give the exact time, but it's generally that they have it at their next meeting in February, and that is. Is it the fourth? That's the fourth, February the fourth, at seven PM in this very same room. Now, for some reason, that date gets changed, the notice will tell you what that date is. But it is their practice that they have it at their next available meeting after this, and that is the February fourth timeframe.
Any other questions pertaining to this particular issue? If not, we thank you for those who spoke about the wedding venue. And if you want to stay, you're welcome. If you want to leave, you're free to leave. This time, we want to go to the next item on the agenda. That's a CZ two-oh-one-eight dash zero-zero-four, Twin Lakes Senior Living Facility. Lee?
Yes, sir. And as you stated, this is a rezoning request from R forty, forty thousand square foot minimum lot size, to R four conditional district to allow a senior living facility. Would be limited to a maximum of three stories. It is age-restricted, not age-targeted. And they are requesting several restrictions on the property. You've got the conceptual layout, the conceptual elevation, setbacks, lot sizes, et cetera. Some pictures of the property. This is standing near the traffic circle of Waxaw Indian Trail Road and Beulah Church Road, looking into the site. Says along, top right is along Beulah, looking toward the traffic circle. That's a church across the street. So that's Waxaw Indian Trail Road going in this direction. That's a church right there. This is again, looking at the traffic circle from the, from the site. And this is looking down Beulah Church Road. So the site is, is over here. There, and I'll get into, there's a few proposed developments in this area that are, that are in the process of being reviewed. I'll sort of talk about those in just a second in another slide. Municipalities in the area, it is surrounded by a couple municipalities. Weddington is both to the north and to the west. And the town of Wesley Chapel abuts this property directly to the east. It also has a little bit of jurisdiction to the south. All these properties out here are relatively, all the ones in this dark green are relatively vacant, with the exception of directly across the street. And let me, let me back up a little bit. This is the entire, this tract, but this is not the entire tract that's been petitioned. In your application, you actually see that it's a, it's an, I think, an eight-acre tract that's right at this, right at the corner. The rest of this tract, there's a proposed subdivision that's in review right now called Twin Lakes Subdivision. That's a, it's a by right subdivision. It's a cluster-style development, so it's, it's a one-acre density, overall one-acre density subdivision, but the lot sizes were reduced down to half acre with the, with the remaining property set aside as common open space.
That is by right?
That is by right, yes, sir. So you're not looking at the subdivision, it's just the, the senior living facility. But I wanted to point out kind of where that was in relationship. There's a proposed subdivision on the, on the remainder, not just this property, but this piece, this piece, and this piece. So it's a relatively large subdivision.
How, how many homes again?
Was it eighty-seven?
Eighty-seven.
Okay.
I'll show you the site plan.
For the residential?
Yes. And then across the street, this is, this is Grace Meadows. This is an approved subdivision. As you can see, part of it is platted. That was a forty-two lot subdivision, I believe. And it is, it is approved. So they just haven't brought in phase two for plating yet. And you do have a couple of other subdivisions, as you can see on this map. This subdivision, which is actually inside the town of Wesley Chapel, is a fairly large subdivision called Candela, I think. I think it's called Candela. Anyway, there's, there are several large subdivisions that don't show up on this map, just because they, they've not been platted yet, or they're in some, some stage of development. So anyway, getting back to this, this is all undeveloped now. There are proposals to develop parts of this as subdivisions and senior living. This area is proposed. There is a subdivision approved. And some of these areas have subdivisions approved on them. Here, and the town of Wesley Chapel, I believe, has approved a subdivision across the street from that as well. So there's lots of development. It's already been approved out there. Zoning in general is R forty. So this is aggregated, this is including an equivalent of Wesley Chapel's R forty zoning, Weddington's R forty zoning. Pretty much everything out there is R forty. The exceptions are, there's a gas station adjacent to this development site. There's a, it's called Nano's Market, I think is what it's called, a really nice gas station. And some of the land uses out there are, again, across the street, on this piece, there's a church. So it's zoned R forty, but, but the land use is more institutional on, on that side. There are, is a significant water feature that goes through the site. There's a stream. And a couple of, a couple of lakes, which is where they get the, I think they get the name Twin Lakes from. There's some fairly large lakes on the property. They're designated as wetlands as part of the development process. Those are, these are all in the subdivision portion of it, but they've all been set aside as buffer areas, common areas. I think the lakes are part of the amenity. As far as transportation, Waxaw Indian Trail Road is designated as a boulevard on the CTP. Is that, is that the right terminology, on the CTP? Future four-lane road with curb and gutter, Waxaw Indian Trail. And then Beulah Church Road, two-lane with paved shoulder. I believe the old terminology was minor thoroughfare, on the old CTP terminology. As far as traffic counts ago, the closest ones to the site, you've got about ninety-four hundred vehicles a day on Waxaw Indian Trail, just to the south of the intersection. And on Beulah, to the east of the intersection, it's about nineteen hundred. As you move up closer to Indian Trail, see the traffic council on Potter jump up to eleven thousand. And on Waxaw Indian Trail, they go to about forty-eight hundred. Land use plan calls for this area to develop a single-family residential. That's the only designation in that area. This is a site plan that was submitted. This is the development area. There's the traffic circle. This is part of the future Twin Lakes subdivision. There's a new road, new street being built as part of that. And the site will take access from those internal streets. There's no, no access to Beulah Church Road, except for this main street into the, into the neighborhood. This is the layout for what this will look like, site plan, if you will. Again, those two access points, you have parking in a three-story, three-story building. And these are some examples of, that the developer provided, that what the intent is for this facility to look like. We did run this through several rounds of review in-house. We had our zoning administrator look at it for parking. He was fine with it, since it was age-restricted. And not just, not just age-targeted, but age-restricted. They did a TIA. The TIA was a, a joint TIA, for lack of a better word, because you had the subdivision and the senior living facility. So those were combined together to run that TIA. So we've got a clear picture of what those impacts were gonna be. Bjorn, I don't know if you want to say anything about the TIA or not, but.
If you want to go back to the transportation slide?
Sure.
So the TIA actually, and this is kind of a common theme we're getting, is that the TIA's will say that improvements are not required due to the impacts of the site, that the road still operates at acceptable level of service with the development coming in. In this instance, it is really not that much traffic because of the age-restricted component of their traffic generation, or per-unit basis, is approximately a third of what a single-family unit is. So even though you're talking about one-hundred-and-eighty single fam, or one-hundred-and-eighty age-restricted units, that's the equivalent of approximately sixty single-family. And from a peak period perspective, it's probably even a little bit less than that. And so from the TIA perspective, no improvements required. But the NCDOT still requires left-hand turn lanes into the site. That'll be required for both the single-family and the age-restricted components to figure out how to pay for it. But those will be required to be built into the site. That was just made by the NCDOT, regardless of what the TIA said, which is often what happens. They have the professional discretion to require improvements regardless of what the TIA says.
As far as the county's planning documents go, again, this, this is in the, just in the comp plan, there's no small-area plans or anything associated with this site. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. So it is single-family residential. When, when staff looked at this, we, there is some language in the comp plan that talks about even in the single-family residential, at, at intersections, you can have, have some commercial development. So we, we looked at this, and with the age-restricted component of it, we, we thought this was an appropriate land use for this area. So if you guys have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer. I think the applicant is here. They probably want to do a presentation. Yes, sir?
The southeast corner.
Right here?
Kitty corner, yeah. Is there any kind of development proposed for that area in the coming days?
Uh, not right now, no, sir. I've not heard anything about it. But I believe these two are owned by the same person, I think. But we've not heard any, anybody that has, nobody's approached us about developing those tracks. There, there is a rezoning, there is a rezoning request for this piece, the southwest corner, that will, it's, it's not ready to come to the board. There's still, I think they're still, I think they have to work on a TIA for that site. But there is a rezoning request for that for commercial.
For commercial?
Yes.
CZ?
Yes.
You know what kind of commercial we're looking for?
Well, their plans are still in the early stages.
No, it's not officially submitted, is it?
It is officially submitted, yes. But we've had, we've had a couple rounds of comments on it, I think, so. And I didn't want to, I don't want to sidebar, but you asked about, about this tract, I just, I felt like I should point out that there is a rezoning request for that property. It's just not, it's not come to you guys yet.
That looks like those are all about two separate venues.
Yes.
May I have a question? Maybe, oops, maybe you want to defer that to Bjorn, but the intersection of Beulah Church and Waxaw Indian Trail, is that considered a major intersection?
We kind of talked about that a little bit today. I think we would probably consider it. I mean, Waxaw Indian Trail is a, is a, is a major thoroughfare through, through the county. Bjorn's gonna fuss at me, because I don't think I'm supposed to use that language anymore. It, it is a future four-lane road with curb and gutter. It connects Indian Trail and Waxaw, and there's a fairly good amount of traffic on it. That's, it was projected to be a four-lane with curb and gutter because of, of the amount of traffic that it carries in, because it connects those two towns. Bjorn, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, the, depends, I mean, what's your definition of major? We have, and we have a comprehensive transportation plan that Lee and I actually were looking at before the meeting regarding the hierarchy of roads for the area that often dictates the right-of-way cross-sections that we're looking for. If you see a multi-lane road, that's primarily means it's a boulevard or higher designation. If you see a two-lane road, it's usually a major or minor thoroughfare. But it's not a hundred percent correlation between those boulevards versus major or minor thoroughfares, and there being two-lane versus multi-lane. Oftentimes, the, the traffic volumes will just rise quite a bit, and, and the need for it to be multi-lane will happen. I mean, Newtown Road, in the Marvin area, this volume, I think is, I think it's in the teens now. It's like thirteen, fourteen thousand cars a day, which is pretty high. And it's only designated as a, a major or minor thoroughfare. It's definitely not a boulevard. And so it's, it's not a direct correlation. So for it to be a major, it doesn't necessarily have a lot of meaning. It's about what the, the overall cross-section of the road. It's about, um, what the, uh, the overall cross-section of the road is more so than the intersection. The intersection's kind of a site-specific situation.
Well, right now, it's just a, a single lane each way, right?
And it will be, and it will be for a long time.
Yep.
When you say long, are you talking twenty years, ten years?
Uh, it will not be, the roads will not be widened through there beyond two lanes for at least twenty, twenty-five years. And there's no project planned. I'm just saying that funded projects are not known beyond twenty or twenty-five years.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I, I will say that as far, when, when, when this, when this land use plan was adopted, one of the, one of the things that we did was we, we took out a lot of the smaller, um, designations of, 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 of crossroads, if you will, or, or intersections of, of roads that said, "These specific areas should be commercial and these specific areas shouldn't be." We, theirs used to exist and, and we, we did away with them with this land use plan update because we wanted the board to be able to, to evaluate and say, "We believe this is a good area for, for development." It does say in there that, that, that certain inter- that, that intersections can be used for commercial development in the single-family residential area. Uh, we looked at it as staff and we felt like that this was an appropriate land use. You could look at it and have a completely different idea, but that's, that's part of this, that's part of the zoning process.
Do you have any traffic counts on Beulah, on the other side?
On the west side?
Yeah.
No.
Not off the top of my head, just whatever we have on the map.
No, the Beulah Church between Waxaw and Indian Trail and Potter Road, that's a, a small connector there.
Right. Yeah, the, these are the traffic counts that, that we got. These are twenty-sixteen, um, traffic counts. And these are the, these are the latest ones, Bjorn?
Well, when the map was made, it was...
Yeah.
I mean, if you're, you know, you're just from experience, your travel is gonna be going...
Sure.
Less.
Sure.
Yes, the volumes, the volumes are higher west of Waxaw Indian Trail.
Yeah.
But we don't know how much.
The vicinity of this map, I don't have a count for just, I don't have a count shot.
As, as of September twenty-fourth, twenty-eighteen, this, this is, these, these are the traffic counts that, that DOT had.
Lee, if this was approved, is it approved only for age-restricted? Or can they take that away and do whatever they want to with it?
Uh, the, the site plan that, that the applicant submitted shows age-restricted. So if they don't want age-restricted, that would either have to be amended here and you guys agree with it, or if it was approved as age-restricted, they would have to come back and ask that that be taken away. 'Cause that's, that's on their application materials.
And we could also ask that it be a condition of the deed.
I'm sorry, what?
Make it a condition of the deed, for the deed that is age-restricted.
Right.
Uh, and determine the condition of the zoning, since the deed has to have that restriction on it.
That was one of our, that was one of our comments on, on this from the staff perspective.
Don't know what the age restriction is.
Age-restricted was what made us feel comfortable about the development. Had it been age-targeted, we would have less comfort with, um, with that. 'Cause again, the traffic numbers are different for an open-ended project versus an age-restricted project.
Now, we've been talking about age-restricted for a good while, man. I just wanna know what the age...
Thank you.
Get you right there.
Thank you.
Here's my Webster's dictionary, don't get me started.
Um, so there, there's actually, um, and a, not an amendment, but there's a caveat to the, um, and there, there are several di- different definitions out there. But, but the one I know is, there's a caveat to fair housing rules. So fair housing rules say you can't discriminate against anybody when it comes to making, um, selling homes. So if you sell a home to somebody, you can't discriminate on the base of anything. There's a caveat that says you can, in certain instances, um, restrict sales to peop- to, I think it's fifty-five and older. So if you age-restrict a community, you can restrict the sales in that community to the, to, to people that are fifty-five plus. And there, there's, there's some provisions that say a certain, a, you know, a certain number of people in, in those developments can still be less than fifty-five. I don't, I don't know the percentage off the top of my head, but it's pretty low. But that, but that, that is a caveat to the fair housing rules.
Thanks for answering that.
You're welcome. And, and, and...
I really hated you looking at me and Dick.
And if, if, if you, if you do a Google search, you're gonna find all kinds of different definitions for, for what age-restricted is. But that's the, that's the one that we tend to gravitate to.
Any other questions for Lee or Bjorn? Okay. Does the applicant want to say anything tonight?
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Moser with the Moser Group, and this is Mark Keim.
I'm a plan designer.
Thank you for your time tonight. We wanted to show you the presentation, just so you have an idea of the overall site plan and the overall project. So let me start this. So Twin Lakes is a hundred and sixteen acres total. It's a beautiful piece of land with two lakes that will soon be home to a custom-crafted community that we're calling Twin Lakes. Imagine a long, winding entrance that leads to a craftsman-style covered bridge and amenity area that includes outdoor kitchen, pickleball courts, covered pier to watch the paddleboards, the kayaks and the canoes, lanternlit walking trails, and all just a short walk from your door. So Twin Lake, Lakes includes eighty-seven lots with a minimum of a half acre and a se- senior living community. So the next slide shows actual images of the property. So one is the aerial showing the two lakes and then just the corner of the lake. I actually took that picture on an iPhone, which is kinda crazy. So the overall Twin Lakes site plan, this shows the residential development. And then you see on the far-right corner, the senior living center. And then we'll go into depth on what that senior living center entails. This site plan is a little closer up of the senior living center, showing the layout, showing the, um, activity lawn and the amenity lawn, um, with the pickleball courts. And so you may ask the question, why is there a need for a senior living center? And so what this, um, senior living center provides is maintenance-free living with the option for the seniors to pay one monthly price for most of their expenses and enjoy many amenities close to home, make friends with similar interests within the community. Most of the lots in Union County are one acre or above. And so a senior seeking to not take care of their lawn and home would have this as an option. And the seniors take up a large portion of the population, and we want seniors to be able to stay in our community without having to leave where they've grown up and having options for them. And North Carolina's aging, and I have some demographics from the Census Bureau just showing the increase of the seniors. So over the past ten years, the population age sixty-five and over has increased from thirty-seven point two million in two thousand and six to forty-nine point two million in twenty-sixteen, a thirty-three percent increase. And there are a lot of facts here that you can read, but basically the summary is, there are a lot more seniors today and will be in the future than there has been in the past, and especially within our community in Union County. And so we would love to see all of those seniors have a place within our community that works for their lifestyle. All of this is basically the same of the increase of senior population. So we'll just go into what you can expect from the senior living center. And the senior living center includes the Twin Lake amenities, which we'll go into further. And Mark will explain. The apartments are individual, climate-controlled, extra-large bathrooms, convenient kitchenettes, spacious closets, emergency call systems, twenty-four hours a day. The monthly rent includes three meals provided by an on-site chef daily. Um, it has activities, housekeeping, lending services, scheduled transportation for all of the doctor's appointments and activities. Um, the fitness center, theater, many amenities, um, for the facility. And then the community amenities include the theater, the barber shop, the resident computers, chapel, laundry room, library, the card room, game room, exercise room, dining services, the shopping. This is in such a unique location. It has, um, clo- it's so close to the Wesley Chapel shops, Wesley Chapel Village, Sun Valley Commons, Sun Valley Marketplace, um, a lot to go to within the area. And then there will be partnerships with personal services agencies to meet all the needs of the residents. And this is just a map that shows the shopping and the country clubs in different places. And the star is where the, um, site is. And then Mark will actually go into the details of the outdoor amenities that the site includes.
So as Mackenzie alluded to, um, we're gonna have some amenities located onsite, but we will have, um, a number of other amenities throughout the development that'll function as a, a shared amenity for, amenity for the entire project. On, uh, onsite at the back of the, uh, facility, we are looking to have a, an activity lawn that'll probably have some level of, uh, informal seating, outdoor fire pits, could have, um, some active recreation such as a bocce lawn or a activity lawn, yoga lawn, something to that matter. Um, we might also have some raised planters for gardening and vegetative activities. As she mentioned, we're also looking to locate six to eight pickleball courts, uh, on the southwest corner of the site. Uh, this would be screened from Beulah Church Road. Expanding out to the greater development, um, one of the activities we find that's most common for senior facilities is walking trails. So while we have sidewalks throughout the development, we've taken the liberty of connecting those sidewalks to create loops that, this, um, smaller loop around the lake, this is about, uh, one-point-two-five miles. And if we expand it out north of the, uh, facility, it's about a mile and a half. On the far southwestern side of the site, we're also gonna have a pocket park, um, that will be activated with probably some informal seating area, most of it's in the buffer, so we really can't amend it ties it beyond, uh, some seating. We'll have some kayak slips, which will probably be more for the residents of the single-family. Also located on the dam between the lakes, we are looking to have some sort of elevated outdoor structure. Uh, it'll be some mixture of stone and timber, portions of it will be covered with, uh, mostly seating elements. And the program for this space is still being worked on.
Those are the actual rendings, correct?
Yes, correct.
That will be built?
One of the, uh, comments that came up in our community meeting was concern from the residents of the cobblestone development about the proximity of this senior living center from their development. The distance from that development is just over two-thousand-two-hundred feet, about point-four-two miles. Another thing to note is the intent of the single-family development. These are half-acre lots up to three-quarter acre lots around the lake. And with it being a low-impact development, the idea is not to masquerade this site. So in order to enhance the value of the subdivision, preservation of the trees on the lots is paramount. The idea would be just to cut the driveway and build the house, so they would all be custom-built. Uh, Bjorn touched on most of the traffic components. I just did wanna add that we will also be required to, uh, install a right-hand turn lane into Site Access Number Two with seventy-five feet of storage. For the senior facility, the AM/PM peak numbers would be thirty-six in the morning, forty-six in the evening. I was able to pull, we don't have full-day counts for the eastbound, westbound on Beulah Church Road between Antioch and Waxaw Indian Trail, but in the AM, eastbound towards the roundabout going in this direction, we have about a hundred-and-fifty trips in the AM, about two-hundred-and-eighty in the PM. And westbound going to Antioch Church, we've got four-hundred-and-eighty in the AM and two-hundred in the PM. So the impact of the senior housing should be fairly minimal.
Can you repeat that again?
Sure. Uh, eastbound is a hundred-and-fifty trips in the AM, two-hundred, uh, in the PM. And westbound is four-hundred-and-thirty in the AM and two-hundred in the PM. Last thing I'm just showing, this is a cross-section, uh, through the site. Uh, this is really just showing the relationship to Beulah Church Road as well as Waxaw Indian Trail Road. While it is a three-story facility, these, uh, the building is set back about a hundred-and-twenty-five to a hundred-and-thirty feet from the, the right-of-way. There'll be the parking lot with parking lot screening, street trees in between that development. So it's not intended to be any kind of urban feel where the building's up on the road. So we just wanted to illustrate that.
So we just wanted to, um, share why we feel like this will be an amazing project for the area. Because it's age-restricted, we don't see this being a burden on the Union County schools or the res- roads. We don't wanna lose residents as they age, but wanna give them options in the community. And one item that we didn't touch on was that, um, this project is going to be heavily screened. And we are going to be preserving a lot of the trees already on the site, the seventy-five to a hundred-year-old oaks. And then the pickleball courts and the facility will be screened with, um, Theodore Cedars, oaks, Colorado spruce trees. It will have a very mountain-y feel. Um, the, there will be a lot of landscaping, including the rhododendrons, azaleas, um, and it will have a, an amazing entrance, but screened from the road and preserving the nature. So thank you for your time.
Quick question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, did I understand correctly that behind this is gonna be these eighty-seven homes? Is that right?
Correct. And I can show you or go back to that?
Okay, so the eighty-seven homes, it's, has access to the water?
Correct.
Water that backs up to the senior living, right?
Correct.
But there's a walking trail from the senior living. If you see where...
You'll be able, you'll be able to walk down here and pick up a trail here that will get you out to the water or take you down around the lake on a walking trail here that will eventually tie back into the sidewalk system here.
The reason I ask that question is, uh, senior living, you think it's senior living. You don't anticipate kids, teenagers, small children or anything like that? How you gonna keep them out of the, off that lawn? Where the pickleball and stuff like that is?
Well, the pickleball courts are intended to be shared by the whole, entire community, correct?
Correct.
As far as this, the lawn back here, I don't think we've discussed any kind of secure mechanism at this point.
There will be security on the senior lawn, but both projects will have access to the pickleball courts. So they can be used by the residents from the homes and the seniors. But the, there will be security along the senior living facility.
Describe the security.
What I would assume would be a gate, um, landscaping, what would you expect?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we're, we're saying we're gonna gate, like, the drive and the access. I think we're just talking about providing fencing around the activity lawn. So it'll be for the residents only.
How do you feel that the impact of this will affect the neighborhood, uh, pricing evaluations of their property, considering they're much bigger lots, more expensive houses, et cetera? What have y'all factored in on that?
It's screened.
Pardon?
It's screened between the senior living center and the lots. So I don't think it will affect the value negatively.
Yep, there's lots around this entire concept right here of acre-plus. I think I'm right in that.
Half an acre plus, yes, sir.
You're talking about these lots right here?
And I'm asking, 'cause there's some pretty mo- some very expensive homes in there.
Correct.
Okay. How have you looked at what the valuation of those homes will be once you get this opened up? Have y'all thought about it, about it or looked at it?
Yes, and we think that this use only positively impacts the... Yes, and we think that this use only positively impacts the values of the surrounding homes. And if you see it's, the senior living center is separated from, it has the same access, but there's a road in between the residential homes and the senior living center. It will be heavily screened that you won't even really see the senior living center from the main entrance and from the homes.
I think we also look at the senior living center as a complementary use to the neighborhood. It makes it a multi-generational type of development where you could have seniors who wanna live in proximity to, you know, younger members of their family who might have kids. And this allows them to all cohabitate in the same community.
Okay. Thank you. Has the eighty-seven homes development, has that been approved already?
Uh, it's currently going through permitting.
Any idea what the price point on the single-family residents are?
They'll be a million-plus homes. The homes.
I think, I think the lakeside homes will probably start probably in the seven-hundred range.
Seven-hundred to a million, I'm sorry.
And I think, and I think the lots further deeper into the community will probably be more in the four to five-hundred range.
Okay, and you, you mentioned these are all custom-built?
Correct.
Do we have any sort of footprint in terms of square footage? I mean, do we...
I know just from going through the stormwater analysis process and with it being a low-impact development, I think we're having to cap the amount impervious that we can actually put on each lot, somewhere in the seven-thousand range. So if you're looking at a footprint, that's maybe two-level, thirty-five-hundred square feet. I can't imagine, once you add driveways and patios and walkways, it's probably not gonna get much bigger than that.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
In the, the senior living area, you said it's three stories. Are there elevators there for these seniors, or are they all stairs?
I would assume there'll be elevators.
There'll be elevators there?
Yes, sir.
Why did you go with three stories? I mean, it's, you're surrounding a residential district which comprises of two-story structures per hour. You know, a three-story structure with the complex living there is definitely not fitting the character of the surrounding area.
Excuse me.
So why, why the three? Is it because it maximizes the ability to get people in, or...
I think we thought with the three-story, with, with the smaller footprint, that it could set further into the site versus having, if we went for, I guess, the same amount of beds, it'd have to be a larger facility that really pushed the envelope of the parcel. But I think that's the ask at this point is, is going for three.
Why not just houses? Make the cluster as part of the overall plan, putting more of the houses there for the seniors. To me, it's just, it seems a bit out of character for the surrounding area to have a three-story structure with a combined two-hundred-and-sixty-seven family units. Two-hundred-and-fifty-sixty-seven family units on Beulah Church, about twelve or eleven units to go up there.
Mr. Chairman, I might, I might pale to be drawn on developing senior living communities.
Okay. On that, please.
My name is Gene Vaughn. I live in Wesley Woods, not very far from where this proposed project is located. I've done this since nineteen ninety-nine, so I have a vested interest in noticing what goes on in Western Union County and how it affects seniors. One of the things that you asked, Mr. Chairman, is, um, what typically would go on in these communities. These folks typically are seventy-five years old or, and, and certainly fifty-five plus, but generally seventy-five plus. Mr. Christopher, you asked a question a while ago as it related to why a three-story building. For the most part, it allows the operational system to care for clusters of people more affordably and therefore pass lower monthly fees on to the seniors who are living in many cases on fixed income. All the foundational floor of this three-story building, which is very common to have three stories, it's very common that their ground floor be linear. It's very common that all the community services within that building, the, the, the food service, dietary component, the activity center, uh, where the movies would be shown, where the staff will be housed, all the care features that would affect these seniors are typically on that first floor for obvious reasons. It is elevator, typically two and three in a building, certainly would be in this case. Typically, these folks would come down, their residential units would be above in one or two-bedroom units, just like they described earlier. But the one thing, the one thing that I, I think it's killed our system up here. The one thing I don't, I want us to not lose focus on is my generation and younger make choices on housing because we wanna get in a good school district, or we outgrew the house we had before. And we want to, to put ourselves in a situation where our house and our family unit are comfortable. When you get to the point where these seniors are living their life, they are running out of choices. They're looking at the latter stage of their life and trying to figure out what that last five or ten years is gonna look like. They want it to be simple. But they need the same choices that we take for ourselves. In many cases, seniors don't have those choices. They're not, they're not able to make the decision because it's our preference. They're making the decision because there's a medical necessity going on with either a husband or a wife that's forcing them to relocate into an area that they would be better off staying in the home that they're living in. So I think it's a great thing that you guys are listening to presentations like this. I think it's a great thing that developers and others wanna put a lot of their money to try to make this thing happen, whether it's in this community or others. But we've got to do like other countries do and provide services for seniors that give them the same type of luxuries and care features that allow them to age in place and us bring the services to them instead of having them scramble to try to figure out who from church can get them to the doctor? Or, or how can we get their medication to them? Or, or can they get their doctor's appointment on Thursday 'cause they can only arrange for this family member to get them there? These types of communities make that easy. But it also gives them the opportunity, typically in three and a half years, once somebody gets to the point that they've been in a facility three and a half years, they're not usually there longer than that. That typically is a statistic for assisted living. You asked a great question, Mr. Chairman, a few minutes ago, and that is more centered around noise and emergency vehicles, the way I took it, and, and how that affects the community at large. Well, these folks are independently living. They need a little bit of support, but they're typically not gonna have emergency vehicles coming to that facility any more readily than we do in our neighborhood now. But it gives them the opportunity to have this support system in place to give them the quality of life that they deserve as they get older. And that's what I wanted to share anyway, and I, I wanted to try to be helpful as I could.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your comments.
One last thing, if you would like to see a facility that we're modeling this facility after and what we would like it to be similar to, on Keikendal, there's Providence Gracious Retirement Living Facility, and they provide the rooms, the amenities, um, very successful luxury, um, facility that if you're interested to see more about what we would like to build here, it would be very similar to that.
Yeah, that's, that's Keikendal and Providence, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. What's, what's the, uh, what's the rent? You said it was a monthly rental fee.
We're not a hundred percent sure yet, but based on comparables, um, they started at about fourteen, fifteen hundred a month with the smallest rooms and moved up. But the rent on these facilities included the, their food. It included some additional things that it's not just a base rent. It has the linen services. It has a lot of additions. And then some of the more expensive rooms went up to four thousand dollars a month. But that included a lot more, a lot more space. But it includes a lot, and we're not a hundred percent sure on those rents. That's just what the comparable rents were as we researched it.
Thank you.
That national average, by the way, is about thirty-six hundred dollars.
Good. Thank you. Okay, would anybody from the audience like to say anything tonight? Yes, ma'am. State your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Julie Thomas. I live at two sixteen Chaucer Lane, so it's really close to this intersection. And one issue that is really concerning to me and that no one has brought up today is that right across the street from where this development is, is a church that's a private school. And it has a pretty large base of business of kids that are, that have to be transported by their parents in the morning and the afternoon. I don't have any slides or any maps or anything. If you wanna look at it, I'll point it out because we talked about all the other corners around it, but we didn't talk about one corner. And it was just described as a church. And I think it's a lot more than just a church when you consider the fact that transportation for all these children is a hundred percent dependent on the parents. I still don't have all the answers, so I just kinda wanted to phrase some questions and concerns that I had. And one of them was about, since this is unincorporated Union County that we're talking about, is the tax money that's coming from this property going to support Wesley Chapel Fire and Rescue? That's one of my biggest questions. Because we're gonna have additional calls and additional needs to the Wesley Chapel Fire Department, who's already, I think that they've reported that they've had fifteen percent or more growth in volume in the past year. Other concerns that I have, there's really no hospitals anywhere close by. So I know that there's been proposal and talk about eventually maybe there being a hospital somewhere towards Stallings, but right now, from this, your closest would be Waxaw, or to get into Pineville or Matthews. You have a pretty significant drive. There's nothing that's close by. I just wanted to state from my opinion, strictly one-hundred percent my opinion, I feel like every time that somebody wants to get high-density zoning into this area, they just throw out the word senior living. And so there's a community that's being built near Wesley Chapel Elementary right now where they got a higher cluster, stronger R-value, again on this determination on age restrictions. I know that there's a development that's in its final phases, that's near Cuthbertson, pretty close by, again, trying to get in high-density zoning and trying to bend the rules and get away from the master plan. And I just feel like the master plan was built, was, was put in place so that we could all have expectations of what would be coming around us. And I feel like this is really inconsistent with anything around it. These residents, when we talked about parking spaces, you guys said that they wouldn't need very many vehicles because they'd have so many things on site. But those residents can't, we talked about potentially there being some commercial in the corner that might come. It's hard to cross that road. I wouldn't wanna cross that road. I wouldn't want my children to cross that road. I would never recommend anybody cross any of those roads. That's beside where this property's talking about because there, there is a gas station. So if these seniors want to get a soda and some popcorn, they can stop by the gas station. But if they wanna go to a grocery store, they cannot walk to a grocery store. If they wanna get a new pair of shoes and go to Target, Target's really close by, but it's not walking distance. I couldn't walk from there to Target without being out of breath. So these people are gonna be very dependent on transportation and buses, and very dependent on the entire system in place. And I would just pray for those folks that, that whoever does do this development is prepared to, to give that. I just wanted, again, bring up the hospital, the fire support, the fact that there is a school that no one talked about. And I think I'm done. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you. May I give you a bit of information?
Yeah.
Have you, uh, attended any of your municipalities' board commissioners' meetings?
I'm starting to. I've been starting to. This is probably my third.
Okay, well...
I'm really interested.
Wesley Chapel, right?
Yes, I am. Well, actually, I'm unincorporated Union County.
Well, just so you know, I had the opportunity to hear this presentation Tuesday night. Thanks to our county and our commissioners, they're working on a project for the, uh, Fire District, and the evaluation of, to the municipalities and this and that, and how it could help the county and things of this nature. You ever have the opportunity to sit in on that? You need to sit in on it because it's very interesting. They're working very hard at it, and each municipality will be working back, making a recommendation to the county commissioners.
I mean, it really matters. When it's, when it's your life and, and when you're dependent on somebody, fire is who you pray for and you hope for. And, and they can say that they don't believe that Fire and Rescue or ambulances will be at this, um, commercial develop, residential development very frequently, but I just question how frequently. I know, we, we talked about the water being there. I did, I have worked in assisted living and long-term care living for ten years, and I can tell you that a lot of these older people that we're talking about in the seventy-five older pop, patient population do start to develop dementia, do do a lot of wandering, do have silver alerts. It's something that is serious and is something that should be addressed, so, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other comments, please? Please state your name and your address.
Courtney Newman, seventy-three, twenty-four Cobble Creek Drive of the Cobblestone Neighborhood, part of the HOA as well. We appreciate all the questions that you guys ask. A lot of them are the same ones we have, trying to get clarification on some of this and the subdivision. Our, our concern is that the three-story building is out of character, knowing that a lot of assisted living are three stories, so that's a concern for us and our property values. Our, our issue with that, and too, is that it seems to be a lot of density in one spot on a corner that's, even though the traffic numbers are two thousand and sixteen, I really think they're very dated compared to with the school increase of the Arbor Brook and that area because leaving my, our subdivision to go to an eight o'clock meeting at Weddington High, I have to leave at seven fifteen to make it on time. So it makes it really rough. And that time, like, it's been brought up, our concerns too are the nine-one-one calls for this facility. We're not really ready for something of the size of that density. It looks like it'll be a very nice facility, but it's very compact, a hundred and eighty-two units at max. That's a lot of calls that can happen. It's one-way in or two ways in to, but on one-way access, that's gonna be really hard if in X number of years, the roads are gonna be worked on. It'll be hard for EMTs and ambulances to get in. We're just concerned of the, we start out talking about restricted fifty-five and plus, then by the end of it, it sounds like assisted living. We're, we're really concerned, this three-story structure, what is it? Is it fifty-five plus, or is it more assisted living? It's not quite clear. And how would the covenants be written with that? 'Cause of a hundred and eighty-two places, possibly a hundred and eighty-two parking places. I know that with my parents, and, and they've just given up their second car, both of them at eighty still can drive. They are good drivers. So if you have couples in these places and they still may wanna have two cars to drive to Target on their own, that's not gonna be enough parking. We're just concerned that, like before that was mentioned, that there's not enough infrastructure or commercial at this time for this facility, for people to have things to do. And then the concern of if we do bring any more commercial into that area, that that's gonna drain from the other cities that are nearby. That there's, there's still a tender point with their Wesley Chapel, with the restaurants getting enough business, and all the upstart with Sun Valley, trying to make sure that those businesses continue to grow at the level that they need to grow for a while. So I appreciate your time, and please, please continue to consider what you guys have talked about tonight with this, because this is something so new for this area, that it's gonna be a big impact, being, um, three stories when everything else is two stories, a very dense area for something that we don't have that much in this area, that has that many units and less parking in this area, and it's gonna pack the area greatly. So thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else like to make a comment? Yes, ma'am. Yes, let's take this lady here first, sir.
Hi, guys. Um, I'm Natalie Palace. I actually live at two zero six Candela Drive, literally around the corner. I brought my eight-year-old daughter with me, and this, I just found out about this last night through Facebook. So one of the issues that I'm having, me personally, is finding out information about what's happening towards my community through... through people in the surrounding areas. I have a mom, she's in her 60s. I have my grandmother, she's in her 80s, and they're very vital people. And I understand and respect what you were saying because we want our, our family members to grow, grow old in dignity. But at the same time, within the surrounding areas, we don't have a park. We have to go to Stallings for my daughter to have some type of activity that is not within the surrounding area of Wesley Chapel. Where do we go? And I know a few months ago, there was a proposal within this, the Wesley Chapel across the street. There was something that was the plan to go there, but what was being proposed was not effective to what was going on within the community. My big issue, where I just started going back to work, prior to that, the roundabout, which is what's part of the issue right now, it took my neighbor an eight-minute drive from our, from our development to her job over an hour just to get to work because of the development. The other issue that I have is that the amount of accidents that's being occurred within the surrounding areas of Wesley Chapel. There is not one day, for the two years that I've lived here, I could count on about four hands about the amount of accidents that is happening within the surrounding areas in the community. Potter Road is a very dense road. Going around the, the roundabout just to take my daughter to, to a one, it takes me about sometime of 15 minutes just to come out of the community because of the traffic going this way. Then to get to the roundabout, it takes me about two minutes or three minutes just to get around a roundabout because some people don't know how to merge or the amount of volume that is going there. Then on top of that, when I'm going down to Providence Road, I'm thinking it's going to be a freeway, you know, just a smooth ride, just to go down, to go into what's Providence Road. The backup traffic, it is redonculous. I have to make a right thinking I'm going to go down to Railroad, and hopefully I can get to my destination just to get to Providence Road faster. It took me over an hour just to get down to Providence Road. So going back to the safety of the community, of the elderly, of the grown and seniors, it is, just looking out my window is just, the word is just disheartening because it's so much traffic. It is so much traffic. The things that we need in the community is not there, especially when you have a very high property value that we would like to maintain. I don't have a problem with homes that the property value matches the surrounding area. That makes more sense. Two, you said 25 years, when we're talking about ratio, about expanding the roadways. Look, take Waverly as an example about the amount of traffic just to go down Providence Road. Going back and forth, if you have to go to work into Charlotte, and I have to go to Charlotte this morning at 8:30, I have to leave my house at 7:45 just to get, to make sure that I'm not late just to, to go on the border realtors, Mingle Place. Do you know how to get there? From where I live, it's not that far. I don't want to stay off topic, but my main issue is that I would like to see something in the community that bring the community together, that makes sense, that keep our values where it needs to be. And if it has to go beyond, you know, I don't know, it just, to me personally, it just needs to make sense. And I think everyone just wants whatever puts in that area to make sense for the community and the people that live there. It's nothing worse than buying a $500,000 to $600,000 house, then all of a sudden you got an apartment complex. What do you think is going to happen to the property value within, within the surrounding areas? Now, we got, Amida's not too far from down. Their, their starting part is $600,000. Taylor Morrison, right across, $500,000, and that's just a start-off price. Taylor Morrison is directly across the street from me, and the starting price is about the same. Within that, as, as a community grows, is just more and more and more and more and more homes. Just add all of those homes together, and just imagine what traffic is going to be like in the morning just to get to work on time. Does that make sense?
We appreciate your comments. Thank you. Okay, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Brian O'Connell. I live at 6301 Highview Road in Weddington. And I'm not going to belabor the points that were just made by my neighbors very eloquently. I can't repeat, in any way, shape, or form, the concerns that I have in regards to the suitability and the fit of this particular development in that, on that corner and in that area. The density just doesn't work. It doesn't work west of Waxaw Indian Trail Road. Not seeing a traffic plan west of Waxaw Indian Trail Road on Beulah Church is extremely concerning. That's something that needs to be developed because you do have two new subdivisions going in in addition to this one that have not been considered. That needs to happen before anybody makes a comment on this or before anybody votes on this, in my opinion. Second thing is economics. I'm not comfortable with what I heard tonight in regards to the economics. I want my home value along with my neighbors to stay where it is. I have not seen a prospectus for the value of the homes that are being deeded today. I have not seen or, or heard what the value of the, the community being developed is going to be either. In addition, there are some ways I've been dealing with senior living myself with parents. There are a couple of different ways that the rent can be worked. Is this going to be an equity buy-in and an equity-based subdivision? Where the seniors have to provide equity to get in, or is it going to be a direct, just a base, basic rent subdivision? Or, or sub, uh, unit, unit-by-unit rent? That's something that will affect the value of that particular property. Those are the things that I would like to add to the consideration that my neighbors have, have put forward.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Appreciate that. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Melissa Dry, and I live at 7346 Cobble Creek Drive in Cobblestone. I just visited Providence Meadows. It is a beautiful place, beautiful, but there's no $1,500 month in there. I was helping my friend. I think the cheapest one was $2,900, and it went on up to $4,000 possibly. I can't swear to it because I went with her on New Year's Day. It is a independent living. There's independent living, assisted living, and senior care. Independent living does not have any nurses. You can hire CNAs to come in and help. That's an additional cost to the public. It's going to be crazy on our fire department. I can't even get out, I, I don't work. I stay home. So I purposely avoid doctor appointments or anything during traffic time. And I, trying to, this morning, trying to go left out of my neighborhood. I don't know how these cars get so fast coming out of that four-way stop. It was an 18-wheeler. I would have been killed. And it's, it's, we've been out here 27 years. When we came, we were on the assumption that it would be nice, one-acre lots. And I want everybody to enjoy where they live, but it's heartbreaking. The traffic is crazy, especially if it's going to be 25 years. It's crazy. And I've watched it grow. I've watched, I hear the fire trucks constantly going. And I, the comment I made to the lady in the set is beautiful, and my friend's parents are going there. But the comment I said to her, "I bet y'all are real good friends with the fire department down the street," she said, "constantly." So I just want you to know, it is not nurses in there. It's going to be a, on 911. So y'all need to really consider that. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
That's my better half.
My name is Phil Dry. I live at 7346 Cobble Creek Drive in Cobblestone as well, abutting this property. I'm not going to reiterate everything that was said. I agree with it 100% from all parties opposing this. I would like to say there was no mention of the four-way stop at Antioch Church Road and Beulah Church Road. That's going the other direction on Beulah Church. I don't think we saw a traffic study there, did we?
I don't know if that was analyzed or not, but the, I wouldn't imagine there would be that much of a traffic assignment from this development to there. You'd either be going north on Waxaw Indian Trail or west on Beulah Church.
You're turning, you're turning into your development about 100 feet from my entrance to my neighborhood. So let me go back to the intersection at Antioch Church and Beulah Church. When we moved out here 26 years ago, that was not a four-way stop, okay? Antioch went straight through. It was a two-way stop on Beulah. We witnessed three people get killed there, in addition to numerous accidents. My wife, that you just heard speak, is responsible for getting at a four-way stop through the DOT, which severely cut down on the accidents. What are you going to do on that end of the traffic? Because it backs up right there, right now, getting out of our neighborhood. Are you going to put a traffic circle there? That happens to be, I think, the owner of the properties.
At Antioch?
Yeah.
Right.
He lives there. Going to put a traffic, traffic circle there?
That's the DOT decision. All right. But the county doesn't build roundabouts.
Well, my only point in making, I'm sorry, I'm a little emotional.
No, that's fine. I understand.
I'm telling you, we witnessed people get killed there. You're going to see more people get killed. We cannot support this type of traffic. It's already, the lady eloquently talked about, and this gentleman, the, the oncoming development we're going to have from the existing neighborhoods already being built, which I'm okay with that, but this is over and above. Thank you.
If I may, just ask you a question real quick. Are you referring to the single-family development or just the high-density three-story facility?
I'm referring to the high-density three-story facility. Because I'm also hearing two, just like I think has already been said, hearing two different things. I'm hearing 55 and older, then I'm hearing 80. I'm hearing, I'm hearing, as my wife said, there's different categories, so we really don't know what we're looking at.
But you do realize the other development, the subdivision, is going to be built anyway. There's nothing that we can do about that.
I understand.
That's about the right of the way the zone leaves there, ma'am.
I understand that. And like I said, I'm not opposed to a subdivision, but I am opposed to a three-story, 180-unit apartment complex.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Y'all have to excuse me. My sore throat. I've been dealing a head cold. My name's Cody Turner. I'm, uh, also work for the developer. I just wanted to reiterate the, I, I feel like in hearing a lot of the comments, as far as the traffic goes, I feel like a lot of people are getting caught up on the, what was called a quote, joint traffic analysis. And Mr. Vaughn spoke to it a little bit earlier. And some other folks are talking about the 55 to 75, and that's a range. I think that the age-restricted kind of cutoff is determined to be 55. However, Mr. Vaughn, his experience in this senior living facility, specifically, he has seen that, you know, 75 and older are typically the folks that you would see moving into here. And they may have, I know the, the vehicles was, was one of the things that was brought up. Two cars, maybe, at that point in life, there, there's two vehicles. Within six months, probably down to at least one. And pretty soon after that, you know, not necessarily even the need for a vehicle. Traffic specifically related to the senior living facility, they're not going to be coming in and out multiple times a day at peak hours. I think that's something to really focus on because I work in the area. I travel frequently to Wesley Chapel, to Weddington, to Waxaw. Going through there in the middle of the day is not a problem. I can get from Indian Trail to downtown Waxaw in 10 to 15 minutes, depending on if you hit that light at 84. And I just wanted to, to reiterate the traffic was a joint traffic analysis with the, the single family, and I don't want to get caught up on the single-family aspect of it, so.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Have you entered any other comments from the audience? Yep.
I really just have a couple of questions.
Okay.
I'm Jen Maskeel. I live at 518 Alucio Court, I'm in Candela Community as well. And y'all probably mentioned it, but just talk to me like I'm five because can they purchase these homes? These are homes to purchase.
So the lots are for single-family residential are for sale.
Okay.
The senior living center is rental only, and it's 55-plus restricted.
And the senior rental, that's assisted living? I mean, I know we're straying away from that word.
It's independent living only. There's no assisted.
So there's no assisted living?
No, assisted.
So it's an apartment complex?
For 55-plus restricted.
Well, age doesn't matter because my mom's 70, and she's driving around like a bat out of hell. So, I mean, I can't stop my mom from driving. She's 72. And I think that all these people will, and I, I can't tell my mom, "You can't go to the store. You can't do this." She thinks she's invincible still. She doesn't know how to write a check.
Yes.
Anymore.
One thing to that is there's transportation provided by, by the facility. So there is a bus system that takes them to the places that they need at non-peak times.
So they would need to say, "I'm going to go to the grocery store at 3:00," instead of like, "I'm hungry right, right now at 11:00."
So there's actually dining on-site, so they don't necessarily have to leave for food. If they would like to go to the grocery store, they can take their car or they can take the transportation that's provided for them.
Yeah. My grandmother's in a place like this, and it's a really nice place too, or it was. But she laid on the ground for, you know, hours the other day until somebody found her. But I, I, it is, it's just traffic, and I just think that it's, and I know everybody said it. I'll just reiterate it again. I mean, it's the traffic. You can't tell these people, "You have transportation at 3:00. You have transportation at 5:00." People want to get where they want to go, when they want to get there. And you can't tell people they can't. And if they have a car and they have a parking lot, then they're, they're going to do it. I mean, I wouldn't want my mother relying on this.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Yes, sir.
Good evening, folks. Pete Finnamore. I live in the Cobble, Cobble Creek Drive subdivision. Just make a couple of simple points. Number one is that I believe that the proposed facility is out of character for the area. And I say that because not only the, the story, but what we really have here is basically apartments. That's what, that's what I've heard. And going from R40 to basically an apartment complex is quite a, quite a drastic change. So I, I just, the second point is, I don't really think from, oh, I heard about the, the dollars and things like that, and even on the subdivision, it's all that well-planned out yet. We, there's no, there's no real activity. So the impacts on the traffic and stuff like that, which we've heard, are, are going to be significant. But my main point is I believe it's out of character for the area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, as we start to wind down, is any other comments? Nice comment? Three minutes.
Less than that. We, we historically, in this society, have not made an issue of the fact that if we decided to put a daycare center there, everybody would look at that and think about it differently. This is the first year that in Union County, the folks that are 65-plus are greater than those 18 and younger. We are now in a transition, and will be for the next 10 years, where the senior levels of population will grow to the point that we need to at some point figure out how to look at this and look at it more like a daycare that we've been used to seeing on corners for years because it's convenient. These same daughters and sons need to have the ability to drop their child off if that's what they need to do and be able to go by and see mom or dad and it be located in a place of convenience. It can't be stuck over here. It's got to be in that path of transportation that make that convenient on the way home, on the way to the grocery store, et cetera.
Thank you.
And I couldn't agree with him more. I went for years and had to go to drive to me here to visit my mother. And what I would have loved to have a facility like this in Union County. And she's lived in Union County for 87 years for her life.
Okay. We appreciate all the comments. We appreciate the kindness that you've shown to this board. And I would ask the board at this time, do you have any comments or final questions or statements, et cetera? Everett, start with you.
I always have something to say. I sympathize with you folks about the traffic. I sympathize with y'all because of the growth in that area. I do feel sorry for you. The state, or the county, or whoever it be, not us because all we are is a zoning board. It's not kept up with infrastructure. They've been behind with schools until recently. They've caught up with schools. We have classrooms that are empty now. But, but this is a market-driven economy too. There's a need for this, or they wouldn't be proposing this. And, and just like you have shopping centers in the, in the middle of your suburbs there, you also have to have services for people. And one of the services, as this gentleman so excellently pointed out, is for the older people. And we're an aging population. We're going to ship them off. And we're an aging population. We're gonna ship them off shop. We're gonna put them in a high-rise up there. Where are we gonna put our parents? And so, these people wouldn't be doing it if there wasn't a market out there for it. And if there's not, they'll fail. But I have to say that we, we all say this, and I say this myself a lot of times, not in my backyard. I get upset about things around my place too. But we're all gonna experience this with our parents, and many of you already have. And I think this is an excellent project. I think it's a class project. I think that it's a really good use for this, and I think as many people as you have in that area down there, certainly this will be used by people who want to relocate, or who live here already, but their parents live somewhere else, and they want them close to them when they get over there. So, you know, it's a market-driven economy. That's all I can say.
Okay. Thanks, Everett.
With all due respect to Everett, I'm gonna take the opposite opinion.
All right.
I live in the western side of the county. In fact, I live down off Henby. I'm very familiar with the traffic on the road, in the mornings and the afternoons. In fact, I live two houses off Henby, so I can hear the traffic run by my house daily. I know what the traffic, I could sit out there, if I gave my kid a penny for every tire they counted, they probably would for me. And get your own traffic study out there for it. My problem is, it's a three-story apartment complex smack dab in the middle of one-acre lots. I understand that aging population in Union County needs a place to live. I'm not disputing that. There's plenty of property in Union County. What I'm saying is, this is not the right spot for it. I'm sure that there can be other parcels within the county that might be closer to commercial centers. Closer to the town centers. To me, it's just, again, I, there's a need for it, or they wouldn't build it. Well, they wouldn't build it if they're not gonna make money. They're not gonna make money, they're gonna make more money on a three-story structure than they are a two-story structure. I just think it's not a good fit for the area. I didn't hear any comments or questions about whether any of the neighboring jurisdictions chimed in at all at Weddington or Wesley Chapel?
I believe the mayors from Weddington and Wesley Chapel were at the community meeting. Have heard from the mayor of Wesley Chapel. I don't think I see him here. Did hear from the mayor of Wesley Chapel, talked a little bit to him.
You'll be hearing from us, too.
I think he was opposed to it.
Well, you know, it just, it just seems to me that this is the wrong place for it. You've got the Waverly, I don't even know what you call it, and the whatever classroom Waverly, I don't even know what you call that, which is even bigger than Waverly. I get it. I don't mind, or, you know, I'm all for property owners making their money on the property. You buy a piece of property, you wanna get an investment on that property. I just think that this is a parcel that's in the wrong part of town. I think you need to get over towards it. Bigger thoroughfare, you know, the hospital point about the hospital, and I don't know who brought it up, about not being a hospital, that's really close by, I think that's, that's pretty, you know, that's a very good point. I mean, you've got a, I just, I'm gonna vote no. I think there's a lot of holes in there. We've got age group of seventy-five and older likely gonna be moving in there. That's pretty damn near close to an assisted-living facility. Got people going into seventy-five and up, rather than as a restricted-age facility. You know, there might be a need for it, but I don't think the need is in this area.
Okay. Russell?
My mother, right now, is looking at going into similar type of property. My aunt lives in a very high-end property, very similar to this. I live in Lake Park, where it's a mixed-use. We got multi-story buildings in there. Doesn't affect the property values at all. None, zero. If anything, the mixed-use is an asset to the community. You got an old church across the street that's been there for years, and a daycare, and then classes and stuff going on. You got a brand-new gas station that was put in right there. And so, there is mixed-use in that area, and I think the need's there. I think this is an asset to the community. I think it's an asset for the way they've set out this whole development. There are hospitals close, you know, for all of us to use. A lot closer than most communities have, when you consider the doctor's offices and the hospital in Waxahachie, and Monroe, and Matthews, and all the things that are around this area. And to me, I think as, being in the business, I think this is laid out, it's a perfect use to maximize and the need for senior living in our community. And there is definitely a need for higher-end, not a nursing home, but senior living where folks can go. Because something happened to my wife, that's the kind of place I gotta go to, you know? And there's a lot of folks that need this type of property, so.
Thank you, Russell. Robert? Any comments?
Yeah. Part of the issue, I understand, I understand the traffic too, I have to deal with it as well. And one of the concerns I have is that the, although this traffic study was done jointly with the development, it wasn't done in a wider scope with some of the other planned developments that are there. I was also, formerly I was a paramedic, and these type of facilities, I can tell you, we go to them a lot. It's unfortunate, but we do. So, you are gonna have increased emergency services use with this facility. And they're gonna be traversing across the city and across town to get to the hospitals. So, you're looking, oh, you're looking at Pineville, you're looking at Monroe, you're looking at Matthews, until they build something maybe in Stallings or, I also heard something somewhere else nearby as well. But you're gonna have, you're gonna have increased traffic with that as well. My parents have moved here from Florida to be closer. They're independent now, but that's not gonna last long. And so, at some point, there's gonna be a lot of turnover in this facility with residents coming in and out. But it is something that is needed in Union County. And I agree with Russell that when you go to Lake Park, it really, there's a mixed-use, a mixed-feel in there, and it hasn't really impacted the community in a great deal. So, those are my comments.
Charlie?
I've got two aunts, one stepmother, that live in facilities similar to this, they're in Mecklenburg County. Both of those facilities are nestled amongst residential areas. And they're both multiple-story facilities. I think one of them's five stories, and one of them is four. My wife, who's in property management, owns a thirty-four-hundred-square-foot home, upscale home that she rents, within about two blocks of one of those facilities. And all it's done is increase in value. It's, the facilities that I've seen, even though they are wildly different than the residential areas that they're tucked into, haven't affected the property values of those areas that I've seen, so. And the size of this facility is probably the size because it has to have a certain economy of scale in order to provide the three meals and provide the transportation. My aunts both drive, but they don't drive a lot. But they like to keep a car, because a car is a symbol that they're still viable and able to. But they don't drive a lot, they prefer not to, so they take the buses that they're provided at these facilities. And they certainly don't go wandering around too much early in the morning. They sit there and eat breakfast. It's needed, and I don't think it would be a detrimental thing.
Patrick? Thank you, Charlie.
I agree with the three gentlemen to my right. It's needed, but not here. It's definitely needed. Everybody's getting older. I just retired two weeks ago, so I know it's gonna be needed. But again, I agree with Chris too. It's just out of compliance with the area.
I would like to reply to that, to yours and Chris. Where do you put it? In a rural area, where there is no medical facilities? And poor EMT or fire service? This is an upscale area where there is hospitals, where there are. Wesley Chapel's got the premier fire department and EMT rescue in Union County. We're gonna have to agree that the five is tops, and they're probably the leader. That's close to where you could be. And you're gonna have EMT service where these people live in, there's a hundred-and-eighty-seven of them, if they live scattered across Union County, or they live in the same spot, you're gonna have the same level of service demanded by their health and by the EMT service as if they lived in one area. Same thing. It's just they're gonna be closer to medical than they would be if they lived out in rural now.
We're not necessarily saying, "Put it in a rural county." But put it near Main Thoroughfare, put it near sixteen, put it near eighty-four. Put it near somewhere where you have access that's not two-lane roads. It's gonna be two-lane roads for the next thirty years.
But we've been sitting on this, and every time that anything comes up on Highway sixteen, it's traffic, it's traffic. And I feel, I do, 'cause I can imagine, like that gentleman said, he moved in here twenty-five years ago. I can imagine what you have lived through by the traffic increasing, and still, two-lane road. Twenty-five years ago, two-lane road.
And the people living on sixteen have big houses, and they don't want it around them either. I mean, you're gonna, wherever we would talk about putting this, anywhere on, from Monroe South or towards Weddington and Marvin, you're going to have people that live in high-end homes that aren't gonna want it around them. So, it's always gonna be an argument.
But that's the area. So, we impose our will upon the people in that area. They don't want it in their area, but we feel it's okay, 'cause we don't live in the area, but we think it should be in that area. Is that what we're saying? That we don't listen to those in that area, because they're gonna be opposed to it? This is what I'm saying. I defy you in the morning, any morning, you get an emergency call, see how long it takes you to get from this facility to Monroe. This facility to Pineville. This facility to Waxahachie. It's gonna be, it's gonna take you a long time. A long time to get there.
Where do you put it? Do you want, where the people are, or you go put them out here in the pasture?
I'm not saying put it in the pasture. What I'm saying is, go to the other side of Weddington. Find a parcel on the other side of Weddington.
You gotta set it on top of the sewer line.
Well, that's fine. Trust me, they're running sewer wherever they can run their sewers. Wherever they wanna run their sewer, they're running their sewer. So, the sewer line's not gonna be the issue, but go put it somewhere that's more suited. This is like a big, you're putting it right in the center of R forty. If you're surrounded all by R forty, you're gonna put it right in the center of it.
But you're not. You got a church across the street.
I got it, but you got a church that's running.
And you got a gas station.
The gas station was there forever.
No.
It's a pre-existing gas station. That gas station was there.
No, it's a brand-new gas.
I understand that, but the facility was designated as commercial a long ago. Yeah.
And that school is a pre-school. It's not a pre-school.
And I'm not trying to fight with you gentlemen. I'm just, you know, having a conversation that, you know, I disagree that this is the proper area for this facility. I'm not saying you don't need the facility. But the developer certainly can go find another parcel that is better suited to the facility and to the surrounding community than putting it right where it is.
Yeah, but...
And he'll make money just as much as he will on this one.
But don't the senior citizens, ain't trying to live in an independent sort of way, don't they deserve to be in areas where they can actually go shopping, or be close to centers?
Sure.
Don't they deserve that?
Sure, then put it over near Waverly. Put it over near Waverly. Put it over near Wesley Chapel Four Corners. Put it down there.
We seem to talk a lot about traffic. And at this time, I would like to issue, accolade if I could. Thanks, Bjorn, for being here to help us through this tonight. And also to Russell, sitting as our representative on the CRTPO, is that correct? He's done a heck of a job for that, and we appreciate him bringing all the information back. I guess we're down to me. This is a tough one. I agree with what's been said, all up and down here. Need, may not be the right spot, et cetera. The one thing that I wish that had been done, and I know by law, we can't require it, but I wish that the developer had got a traffic study on that corner to let it, see, everybody's thinking this and thinking that, but we don't have true one-hundred-percent numbers. They're a couple of years old, aren't they?
There was a traffic study done, you mentioned it earlier.
I must've missed that then. I thought you said that the traffic numbers were...
No.
Makes the entire problem.
There was a traffic study completed. The traffic study only required the right-hand turn lane into the eastern entrance into the site. The NCDOT, as they are often inclined to do, required additional mitigation, just because they can do so.
The traffic counts that we saw on that piece of paper were right?
That's just the traffic count based on what they do every year or two on fixed points throughout the state.
That's what I was talking about.
Yes.
I was talking about those traffic numbers.
And they only do those counts every two years. I just looked up online and...
But you can request that, right?
Not really, no.
We can, they do it.
They do it on a prescribed schedule, and there were counts done at these intersections that Mark referenced specifically for the area in front of the site for the traffic mitigation. And only a D cell lane was required, but the NCDOT said we want left-hand turn lanes at both access points, which they're agreeing to.
Okay. It's my error, then I apologize. I do think there's a need for it. I'm fastly approaching that age that might need one one day. Maybe sooner than I think, if my wife has her way. But I think that there's been comments from both sides, and it's a tough decision to have to make. No one can win in this. I wish we were at a point that we could do this. But I've got to say that I've got reservations about it. I'll just be totally upfront. I think it's needed, but I guess I come down to the location. I come down to the location of where it is. I come down to the school. Let me give you an example. I live in Waxahachie, and you go down Providence at that, I believe it's a Baptist church, on the right-hand side where you're going to Waxahachie. And that's a school bus drop-off, if I'm not mistaken. And those people get in there to pick up their kids, they can't get back out on Providence. Because these adults are running like bandies going up and down the highway instead of recognizing a parent with a child, and all. And I just, I'm not comfortable with this. I just don't feel like I've had enough information. I appreciate the fancy PowerPoint and all that, but it's figures that's been thrown up that we've known that the population is aging. But I don't know if I'm expressing myself very well, but I just, there's something that tells me that the location is wrong. I'm sorry to say this to the people that think it's the right location, but that's in my heart. And I've, that's, I would say I'd have to vote no. And I've, that's, I would say I'd have to vote no. So at this point, I'm going to take a motion to, one where the, do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve that it is, as it is presented.
Okay, the motion's been made.
Second.
We have a second?
Yeah.
Charlie? Okay. Everett? Charlie? Okay. With those, all those in favor, raise your right hand for the project. Okay. All those opposed, raise your right hand. How do you come out?
Four opposed, three in favor.
Okay. All right. Folks, I appreciate y'all being here tonight. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your kindness. And y'all have a safe trip home.
I'm saying that this is only a recommendation. I just want to make sure we're understanding that this is a recommendation to go to the commissioners. Likely the February fourth meeting. That is a public hearing. It's a little more formal. They do actually keep people a three-minute time limit, but they do allow public comment. And generally, the board does not make a decision that night. Most of the time, they take public comments, secure the project. They wait until their next meeting after that, which would be the second meeting, Thursday, Monday in February. And then they'll generally make a decision. But there is a decision to make in the body, this is the right thing.
As we continue on here, do we have a staff report? All right? No staff report? Any other comments? Go Clemson. I thought you slipped, said Alabama. No, I'm just kidding. Do we have any comments from any of the board members? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn? Voter's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Charlie. Therefore, all those in favor say aye. Okay. We are adjourned.